All right, I'd like to call me back. All right, we now come to the public comment section of our meeting. I know there's a lot of folks who've come out to the meeting tonight to talk to the Commissioner about issues that are important to you. Sure, there'll be a variety of viewpoints shared on this. We'd just like to ask that everybody who takes their time to talk to the Board this evening, does so in a manner that's respectful of the chambers, respectful of people on all sides of this issue that is near and dear to a lot of people. Everybody who speaks during public comment will have three minutes, up to three minutes to speak. When you get an orange light, it means you've got about 30 seconds left. When you get a red light, it means your time is up. We want to ask everyone to please respect the time limits. We want to give everyone the same amount of time to be able to speak to the Board. So when your time's up, please wrap it up. One other thing I would ask is that folks in the audience not cheer or boo anybody who speaks, and whether you think someone made the most brilliant comments you've ever heard, or whether you think it's the worst idea you've ever heard. We want folks to be able to talk to the Board and have their chance to do so. So please, please just refrain from clapping or cheering or critiquing anybody during the public comment period. I don't know that anybody has any signs here, but if you do, we'd ask that you not hold them up. We want people to be able to see in the room, so you can hold them at your chest if you want to, but please don't hold them up in a way that would be distracting to the meeting. All right, thank you all for being here. I think what we'll do, and we've got a lot of folks here, what I'm going to suggest is we just kind of start over on this side of the room, and you can raise your hand, and I'll kind of work on the first rows, and then we'll just kind of work our way back. So we'll start over here with Mr. Tracy DeBrul. And then you may go next.
Okay. Actually, before I start, I just want to say the main thing I was looking for on the campaign this year, I was actually running across Mike. Last year, actually, I saw him make everybody move everything because they was too close to the line, you know? Boston Marathon, hundreds, thousands of people running down the road, and on the backside of a pillar, the bomber turned around and stuck his device, suppressing his own device and blasting back on and getting a handful of people when his target was on the other side. In Oklahoma City, in Oklahoma City, he turned around and with basic farm equipment, he turned around and took out half the federal building. My name's Tracy DeBrul, I'm 12 years US Marine, and I was an ordinance specialist. And the reason we use the .556 or the .223 round that's so commonly familiar with AR-15 and the M16 is because it's actually least lethal, it's the size of your kid's 22-inch diameter, you know? And the reason we use it is because we want people carrying them off the battlefield and medicating them, you know, seven to one is the ratio to take care of the wounded. We are a nation that's founded on for the people, by the people. And what that means is if we as a governing body are doing our job, then they can have all the guns in the world, and they'll use them to protect us, you know? And so I don't think there's any reason when any citizen stands up and turns their ass and says, hey, we want something to protect our rights, to guarantee our rights. Because, you know, as you see the red stuff, you know, the red coats are coming, you know, to take our rights, you know? People sleep better at night knowing they got a way to protect themselves. And if you're firing a 22 caliber round, you know, they put nine millimeter hole magazines in people who are hopped up on assaults and stuff like that, you know? So we actually have good gun laws, and I don't see there's any reason they should ever ask anybody to take them away or change them. I mean, we've got a good line of guidelines, but what we need to start working on, and a lot of the reason I'm running, is because with my experience, my training has actually introduced methodology and ways to where we don't have to worry about the mass violence that just got everybody scared. I'm going to cut my time short, but just realize when prohibition happened, crime went up, you know, less is more. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm with the North Carolina Federation of Republican Men. I'm Fremont Brown, I'm one of their Vice Presidents. I brought in tonight a plan called the Second Amendment Protection Act. I've turned it into your, whatever, the gentleman over there, along with a petition from another group who has signatures for 1,400 people. This is real easy, folks. It's not about safety, it's not about danger, it's about our rights guaranteed by the Second Amendment. And that Second Amendment says, shall not be infringed. And that means no rule, no regulation, no law concerning arms, period. And that period is at the end of that rule. Now, the reason we're at this point we're at, where we're asking for our rights back, is because in the last hundred years or so, especially since 1934, we've lost those rights, piecemeal by piecemeal, because we haven't stood up and told our elected officials, no. One of the things our elected officials have failed to understand is their oath of office in many cases. The oath of office is you shall adhere, support and protect the constitutional rights of the United States, the Constitution, and the Constitution of North Carolina. Well, when you make all these unconstitutional rules, you're not respecting your oath. And we need you to stand up, be a moral person, and adhere to your oath. It may be brutal, it may be nasty to you, and I might point to any particular one of you, because I'm sure most of you weren't even around when some of these laws were made. But it's up to you to put them back where they belong. Remove these laws, and you'll be much safer. The reason it's there is not because of safety, which everybody wants to scream about, it's because if your government gets carried away, you have the way of taking back your government. And that's the way it was back in the beginning. That's the only way we're the same country we are today. So adhere to the Constitution, follow your oath, correct this problem, and we will go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Gipps, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us to speak today. My name is Tom Van Slanrooff, I'm here in Buncombe County, and I am here for the same reason, to voice my concerns and my need for you to understand that I'm not going to pretend that the mass shootings and things that happen here and around our country and all across the world are irrelevant, they are very, very important to me, and I would love to see them stop. But we cannot let the people who go around deranged doing these shootings and not knowing a normal person's not going to go out and kill a whole bunch of people. What we want to know is, can you support us? Our Constitution says that it's our right, I'm not going to say that it should be a sanctuary county, it should be constitutionally protected. It should be, these laws that they want to create out there saying that we don't have the right, or they want to take away this type of gun or that type of gun, it doesn't say anywhere in there that we should be limited to what we can carry. I'm sure that most of the folks in this room are law-abiding citizens, and we wouldn't have any problem. As you see tonight, they may have them outside, they may be at their house, but these are law-abiding citizens, and they deserve to be able to protect themselves. It is, to me, it is about safety, it's about me being able to protect my wife, me being able to protect the gentleman next to her, and every one of you out there needs somebody to watch your back. The church shooting that we just had where the gentleman was taken out, he was taken out because of one of us here, one of us that carry our weapons to defend everyone around us. There may be a day out there when one of you are in danger, and one of us can protect you, and we're going to protect ourselves doing it. So please consider our rights that are stated in the Constitution and do what is right for us.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sorry. Is that better? My name is Michael Klein. I have lived in Buncombe County since 88, although I'm not actually originally from the state. I went to Asheville High School and graduated in 93, and while I was there, we had both indoor and outdoor shooting ranges. We had firearms on the premises, not BB guns, not airsoft like they do today. And no one was ever injured, no one was ever shot, because we were taught respect. We were taught that owning a gun and having a gun and using a gun is a privilege, and you have to take responsibility with that kind of a great privilege. When I left high school, I joined the Navy, where even though I was sent to an active war zone, I never had to fire any of our weapons. And again, no one was ever hurt, no one was ever injured by any of these weapons. And most recently, I think the best example is in Virginia, where these 20,000 people got together peacefully. There weren't any buildings looted, there weren't any cop cars flipped over, no local businesses had their windows smashed in. Everybody behaved themselves, everybody was peaceful. Because at the end of the day, what it comes down to, it does not matter what a man has in his hand if he has an intention to kill in his heart. A lot of people act like before the invention of the gun, everybody was just perfectly peaceful, and everybody got along. That's couldn't be further from the truth. People have been killing each other for any number of perceived grievances, difference of religion, I want something you have and you don't want to give it to me. And so they use rocks, sticks, slowly it developed over time into other weapons, but still, good people don't do bad things. And I truly feel that the potential for abuse with red flag laws are far outweighing benefit that they would provide for us. So I think we need to put more emphasis on the laws we have, and take away some of the stigma that goes along with, I guess, mental instability. People who don't come forward, you know, we're trying to rely on our neighbors to go and ferret out who's unstable, but if we let them know that it's okay to come forward and get help, then they won't have to hide. Thank you.
I actually have eight people that have given that need and time, you guys can stand up and be counted. So they know about cheating? All right, and so all you folks here are standing up. You know, you're giving up your time, right? So give me a nod from that.
Correct. Thanks, y'all. Well, thanks, everybody, for having this hearing, meeting, whatever you want to call it. I want to share, my name's Bernard Carmen, I've been around the area since the mid-eighties or so. Kind of got kicked out of Asheville, long story, but anyway, I want to share, I'm speaking on behalf of natural rights, and I want to share a few natural rights to self-defense facts, because there's a lot of fiction going on right now especially. So the first section involves ineffectiveness, dangerousness, and deceit of public servants when dealing with gun regulations. First of all, I want to start out by saying, no gun regulation will ever serve to minimize violence. Rather, nearly every gun regulation serves to maximize violence by only regulating law-abiding citizens, especially helpless victim zones, otherwise known as gun-free zones, which cause peaceful people to be disarmed and therefore become easy prey for violent, non-law-abiding citizens and criminals, actually. Gun regulations only serve to regulate individuals who obey the rule of law. Violent criminals do not obey the rule of law, yet in spite of this blatantly obvious truth, ignorant and/or dishonest public servants, and I'm not speaking of you guys, okay, this is just in general I'm speaking, okay? Now even presidential candidates disregard this fact while advancing continued ineffective and dangerous legislation. Using deceptive fear-mongering tactics, which have been widely embraced and disseminated by the mainstream media, anti-gun public servants and candidates continue to routinely advance blatant deceit regarding firearms. For example, likening semi-automatic rifles, which function no differently from century-old hunting rifles as assault weapons, so-called assault weapons, giving the masses false data upon which to base public opinion. Though rephrased, assault weapon is deceitful, as common knowledge dictates that weapons are used for both offensive and defensive actions. No firearm regulation can ever prevent a non-law-abiding violent individual from initiating aggression against law-abiding citizens. Therefore, regulating firearms or their magazines in any way only prevents peaceful people from protecting ourselves, our loved ones, and our neighbors from such violent individuals. Those who erroneously disagree with this fact need to consider the failed and destructive war on drugs, which has never prevented access to any drug on the black market. Law enforcement against prohibition, believe, has much truthful information regarding this subject. Bottom line in this section, I want to make sure and resonate with everybody is that reasonable or common sense so-called gun regulations do not exist. They are nearly all effective and dangerous. The next section deals with the legal duty of public servants toward healthy societal relationship. Bureaucrats and law enforcement officers advancing firearm regulations, especially confiscations of any kind, violate the oath of office each one takes to defend the US Constitution. And by doing so, they disqualify their official and legal authority. Creating more ineffective and dangerous firearm regulations will serve to further aggravate the relationship between peaceful American citizens and law enforcement, because LEOs will be ordered to also violate their oath of office as well as the natural rights of their own countrymen, further pitting the people against LEOs, in like manner, as has been done via the failed and disruptive war on drugs as previously noted. It's the duty of American citizens and LEOs to resist and disobey officials who have so violated their just authority, which was granted by the people. These public servants have not been held accountable for such legal violations, which begs the question, if there is no penalty for public servants who violate their oath of office, what is the point of taking the oath of office to begin with? Now, this next last section basically deals with potential dire consequences of natural right to self-defense violations and usurpations. Our natural rights are rooted in natural law and originate from our Creator, nature or nature's God, not the US Constitution. The US Constitution is merely a guarantor of our natural rights in a legal framework by which to limit the state, not the people. Natural rights as derived from natural law are not negotiable via any so-called democratic majority rules process. No collective of individuals can justly violate or usurp natural rights. This principle was so important to the American founders that they installed into the nation's law various anti-democratic mechanisms, however, the masses have little to no clue what constitutes a natural right. It appears that the overwhelming majority among the masses erroneously believe that so-called rights originate from the state. The altering or removal of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution in no way alienates from us our individual natural right to self-defense, which always stands regardless of corrupt and unjust legislation. Therefore, regardless of legislators' actions at the local, state, or federal level of government, many Americans consider all counties as perpetually being Second Amendment sanctuaries, and there are millions of us who will not comply with further ineffective, dangerous, and illegal firearm regulations, especially not confiscations via so-called red flag laws, which yes, are being abused already, and people have died already as a result of them. There are also certainly plenty of LEOs who will refuse to carry out such anti-liberty actions identical to that of the British Empire of the 18th century, whose such actions ignited the American Revolution, the National Socialist German Workers' Party, which led to World War II, and so many other totalitarian empires which resulted in massive destruction of life among the working class. Public servants who continue to advance such anti-liberty agendas against our natural rights to self-defense are not considering the very potential dire consequences of such actions, but could easily not only lead this country into an all-out civil war, but also ignite World War III. To understand all this better, it's paramount to consider the math. If only one, no, I'm sorry, if only .1% of the American population refuses to submit to any kind of gun confiscation legislation, those who so insist on such disarmament must force of the state realize they must have to murder 300,000 Americans who have never had a history of violence. If that number is anywhere from 1% to 10%, they will have to murder anywhere between 3.3 to 10 million Americans to achieve their political goal of disarming the people. Therefore, logic and reason dictates that not one single individual argument for gun bans, or not, I'm sorry, that not one single individual who is arguing for gun bans or gun registration is offering any actions that would actually reduce gun violence. All such actions, and not just gun violence, just violence in general, all such actions can only greatly increase violence and further widen divisions between civilians and LEOs, which have been born out of ignorance, hatred, and even so-called racism, as many neo-American gun regulations originate with Jim Crow laws. It is an outrageous fraud to claim to be against gun violence when the actual position being taken is to be willing to murder millions of innocent and otherwise potential Americans to obtain a political goal. From the few, just a couple minutes left, I don't even take up the whole time, a couple personal notes. Just want to make a note that a firearm's necessity is akin to that of a fire extinguisher. We've probably already heard this, everyone's already heard this, right? It's not needed until it's needed. History dictates that every so often, both are very much needed. I have no history personally, I have no history of violence, yet because I'm willing to stand up against state tyranny, of which I have a unique personal experience here in Asheville, I have been called violent even by some who apparently remain ignorant to the fact that violence is only justly attributed to an aggressor, not one who is defending oneself, in which case it's called self-defense. We, the people of not just Buncombe County, but all of western North Carolina and beyond, must unite together over natural rights principles and demand justice accordingly from our public servants, whose sworn duty is to protect rather than to violate our natural rights. And we draw a proverbial line in the sand, we have to draw a proverbial line in the sand at this point, which reads mullen la, that's pretty much where we're at at this point. So we ask council to do the sensible thing, show a lot of wisdom in what's going on here, and if you really want to serve the people of Buncombe County, you'll know what to do. Thank you.
I should run for something. My name is Sandra Ingle. I'm from Buncombe County, resident my whole entire life. I'm not here to ask you to change anything. I'm just here to ask you to protect what we have left. I am a single mother, I am the sole provider and protector of my family, and I use a gun to protect my family. And I'm asking you not to take that away. I'm asking you to protect that, help me to protect my family. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I abide by the gun laws that there are now. They only affect law-abiding citizens. Enforcing more is still only going to affect law-abiding citizens. I don't need three minutes. I just need you to protect what we have.
Yes, sir, and then you can begin next.
All right, thank you for the privilege to speak. My name is Jeremy Jones, and I'm a native of Asheville, North Carolina, resident of Buncombe County. I was born right here in our local hospital 35 years ago in 1985. I am a law-abiding citizen, and as you can see, I'm here in a professional manner, and I speak peacefully. I'm a born-again Christian, and I believe the Bible to be God's word. There's a book of the Bible written by a man named Nehemiah. It tells the history of the Northern Kingdom's army breaching the defensive walls of a city that we know called Jerusalem. There was a horrible massacre in the city and several thousand prisoners of war. Years later, the author of this book, Nehemiah, was tasked to lead a group of men to rebuild the walls of this city. They were opposed, and they were attacked, but they accomplished this great feat by one simple strategy. They worked with a tool in one hand, a weapon in the other. They remembered the massacre when their government failed to protect them, and they claimed the right to protect themselves, to protect their families, to protect their city. In 2008, the trial of the District of Columbia versus Heller, the court, the Supreme Court, confirmed that the Second Amendment adhered to individuals. I stand before today an individual. I am the people. I represent not only myself, but my family as well. You see, my wife trusts me to protect her. My two-year-old son cannot protect himself, and therefore relies on me to keep him safe. It is my God-given responsibility to protect my family, as is every man, every husband, wife, father, mother, brother, and sister. The Second Amendment maintains our rights to protect our families against any and all imminent threats. When these rights are infringed, we are put at an extreme and unconstitutional disadvantage. Every law-abiding citizen is. And the problem still does not change. Evil, godless people exist, and some murder, some rape, and some abduct. Evil, godless governments exist as well, and we've seen the devastation they can cause on a defenseless nation. We are here requesting that you protect our right to protect ourselves and our families. We're not just a bunch of the ignorant rednecks that just love our guns. We are hard-working, extremely capable, law-abiding citizens that love our freedom, our liberties, and our families. Please, do everything that you can, and that you should do, to protect our rights. Fulfill your oath and office well, and protect the rights of the people. In closing, regarding the safety of every citizen, if people were willing to die to have these rights, why would anyone think that people wouldn't be willing to die to keep them? Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Matthew Putnam. I live in Black Mountain. I am making a comment on a different subject. I would ask the Chair to consider calling on my colleague, Ms. Honeycutt, next, because that would keep the flow of debate to our two comments and then back to the subject at hand.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, my colleague, Ms. Hannah Honeycutt, and I offered the Board of Commissioners an opportunity. We offered an opportunity for you to show the citizens and the employees of Buncombe County that your words committing to transparency and responsible oversight would be followed up with actions by the Board of Commission. Since the last meeting, numerous employees have contacted Ms. Honeycutt and I and expressed their concerns with the changes towards our health care benefits being pushed forward without any oversight from the Board of Commission. A small number of those employees, I know, have contacted you all directly to voice their concerns. Many other employees have asked Ms. Honeycutt and I if we were worried about any repercussions for speaking out on this issue. Think about that for just a second. What we are asking the Commissioners to do is hold a public debate and hold a vote on an issue that affects both employees and taxpayers. That's our request. So the culture of fear that is so entrenched in the employees and the workers of Buncombe County from our previous administrations is so entrenched that just that simple request raises fear in the minds of employees. But take heart, because there is hope, and it's easily attainable, because you all can take action. You all can take action and show that each employee and each citizen that you are committed to transparency and responsible oversight. Let me be clear, I understand that the county legal department is taking a strained legal opinion that you do not need to consider these changes. As an attorney, I disagree with my colleague. My position is that there is nothing that is preventing you from taking on this debate and this vote. So I would ask you to choose transparency and responsible oversight. Our county's motto is, people to match our mountains. Seated in this room and in the overflow room are my fellow employees, people that come into work every day to do their best for Buncombe County. We know that we are people to match our mountains, and we're here to demand that you, the Board of Commissioners, be leaders to match our people. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Honeycutt, you can come up next. And as a point of information, this item is on the county commission agenda at our next meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Hannah Honeycutt. I live in Asheville, North Carolina. I also work for Buncombe County with Mr. Putnam. Mr. Putnam spoke generally about the issues that the fellow county employees have brought to mind. The first issue that a lot of county employees are concerned about are the county health fairs. As you all know, we have to attend these health fairs or go to our doctor to have measurements taken, medical measurements, and to have our blood drawn. Employees have expressed concerns that there's a lack of privacy, that you can hear other people's health information being shared. They've expressed concerns that the folks who are performing these medical tasks do not appear well-qualified. There have been stories circulating throughout the department that county employees have been exposed to the blood of other participants. This is obviously a huge violation of universal precautions and could expose folks to bloodborne diseases of other folks. We would ask the Commissioners to look into that, to ensure that the folks who are taking our blood are qualified. We've also heard stories about people who have gone to these health fairs and have received results that are very different from the results they receive when they go to their medical doctors. I've heard there will be an appeals process, but no information has been provided to employees about how to start that appeals process. Employees are also concerned about the validity of this program. County admin has provided us with statistics that seem a little too convenient about how this wellness program is going to save taxpayers money in the long run. County employees want to know who did these studies. Were these studies performed by the folks who are benefiting, who are profiting from this contract? County employees want to know if we have to submit our blood, our medical information to this person, how do we know that it's going to a valid purpose? We want you all to consider that when you have this meeting in two weeks. We want you all to ask those questions, since we have not been asked those, been given the opportunity to ask those questions. And even if we have been, a lot of folks, as Mr. Putnam mentioned, don't feel safe coming forward. A lot of people are concerned about discrimination. It's not just that we have to provide our blood, or that we have to go see a doctor. We also have to provide additional information, women in particular, reproductive health information. We were told that we could not, we could elect not to provide that information, but it may affect our health score. Another female employee asked if that would impact our ability to receive the same benefits. She was not answered. Trans employees and non-binary employees are concerned about how they will be impacted by this one-size-fits-all health risk score that the counties applying. They're concerned about discrimination. Older employees are concerned, folks who have genetic issues like high BMI or genetic metabol, metabolic disorders are concerned about discrimination as well. So we would ask the Commissioners, when you all meet next, in two weeks, to ask these tough questions and report back to employees, so we know that we are being heard. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for giving me a moment to speak. Please bear with me, I tend to be a pretty fast speaker, comes from my employment experience. What I have to say concerns our Second Amendment right. What I have to say is geared towards our general current political environment. No, it does not point fingers at any one particular person, but I would ask that people take a moment just to listen and to understand where we sit with our current political environment. Our founding fathers instituted the First and the Second Amendment with the wholehearted understanding that they go hand in hand. The Second was required to defend the First. It was an unfortunate necessity that we were required to even have to include this in our Constitution, and that we still have to fight for these basic rights today. As a legal law-abiding citizen of this country, it is my right as a human to be able to defend myself and my family against all dangers, foreign and domestic. This is not a right that any government can give or take away. We have an innate right to voice our opinions, to be a voice against tyranny, and to defend those freedoms at any cost, especially when some of those injustices are being perpetrated by corrupt elements in our own government. There are current elements in our government that are working to circumvent our basic rights and attempt to convert our republic into a socialist state. The legal citizen majority did not sign up for socialism. Our ancestors did not fight and die for socialism, and we will not sit idly by and watch it happen. It is up to our local government to stand up for the citizens of our community, do what you were voted into office to do, represent the constitutional rights of the citizens, lest we have to vote to find some that will, or we be forced to do it ourselves. Those are the founding principles of our Constitution. We are currently residing in a society fraught with violent elements that law enforcement is unable or unwilling to deal with until after the fact. I do not wish to be one of those statistics to which my family will have to depend on law enforcement to find my attacker or killer after the effect, especially when there is only a 50% or less margin of the case ever being solved. I am a gun owner, and if certain elements in our government have their way, the probability of being able to defend myself will be taken away, and I will be at the mercy of a tyrannical government and the criminal element that resides in our society. Buncombe County already has excessive laws in place that vets gun owners with background and mental health checks. It's not the law-abiding citizenry that we need to be concerned with, yet we are the ones that pay the penalty. We have corrupt government elements that wish to hinder and remove our ability to defend ourselves, our families, and our homes. Yet what are we going to do to impede the criminal element that does not follow those same rules? Criminals do not follow the rules, and where there is a will, they will find a way to obtain a weapon. What am I to do should a criminal break into my home? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're next. Sir, I, you may go next, I called in the lady behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can follow her.
All right.
I am a resident of Buncombe County, and I support the movement to make Buncombe County a Second Amendment sanctuary county for several reasons. First of all, women in particular should have access to firearms in order to protect themselves and their families. It takes far less practice time for most women, especially petite ones, to learn to safely and effectively use semi-automatic sporting rifles, including AR-15s, than it takes for us to learn to control a shotgun or a handgun. These very rifles that are easy for women to use are classified as assault weapons in the laws proposed in Virginia and in our own state legislature. Magazine capacity restrictions are also unfair to women. I have shown several women how to fire handguns, and they have universally agreed that a full-size pistol is easier to control and less intimidating than a compact pistol with a smaller magazine. They are also surprised at how quickly five to 10 shots can be fired, and feel more confident that a larger magazine would give them the best protection, especially against multiple invaders of their home. I also support being a Second Amendment sanctuary because the firearms restrictions proposed in Virginia and North Carolina place an unfair burden on low-income families, including single women and single mothers. Finding the right firearm for a particular woman or particular family's situation takes time and research. It is a considerable investment for a low-income family to purchase a firearm, and it takes more money to practice frequently enough to achieve familiarity and proficiency with that firearm. Imposing new laws so that a firearm that a low-income family purchased legally is no longer legal, or laws that require these families to purchase new, smaller magazines that may work less reliably with their gun simply because some policymaker has decided that 10 rounds is all anyone possibly needs to protect their family, is bureaucracy at its worst. I also believe restricting rifles is short-sighted. In many places and times, the unarmed populace has been threatened by armed aggressors. Women from El Salvador, Honduras, and Guatemala were threatened by armed cartels and forced to flee here as refugees. Civilians in England in World War II faced armed German pilots shot down over their fields. In Swat, Pakistan, Swat was invaded by armed Taliban, who first targeted the police force and then imposed their version of Sharia law, oppressing Swat's women and making it illegal for girls like Malala Yousafzai to go to school. I agree and hope that these and similar examples are unlikely to happen here, but I am also convinced that part of the reason why is that we have a culture that appreciates and promotes firearm ownership and firearm safety and education. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. My name is Kirk D. Lyons of Black Mountain. I'm a member of the Western North Carolina Liberty Coalition. I'm also an attorney, a member of the world's second oldest profession in the own profession that cried specifically condemned when he was on earth. And he said woe unto you lawyers. As a member of the Buncombe County community, I'm here to show support for the resolution presented to make Buncombe County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. We are here today because of the actions taking place in our sister state, Virginia, where the royal governor there, Lord Dun, excuse me, Lord Dunmore, Governor Northam, has been proposing confiscatory gun laws to the Virginia House of Delegates that have been crossing the border over here. We're hearing noises about it in Raleigh, and that's where y'all come in. We are here to ask you to interpose yourself from the citizens of Buncombe County from any confiscatory gun laws or gun laws coming out of Raleigh or Washington, DC, that are unconstitutional or add to anything to burden the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment, which of course says, "The right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed," which is an inalienable right, it's not a right given to us by the government, it's a God-given right, and only God can take that right away. If these laws are passed in our state legislature or in our national capital, we will be helpless. And when we put to the decision, do we obey or not? Do we lay down and allow the government to trample us? No. Your duty is clear. You are the lesser magistrates. It is your duty to end with the sheriff of Buncombe County, as the highest elected law enforcement official in the county, to interpose yourself between the higher ranges of government in the state and the national government to those of us, the citizens of Buncombe County. That is called the interposition of the lesser magistrate, a legal term that our ancestors in the American Revolution knew very well. That is a reasonable thing to do. Of course, if you pass a resolution, it is just the opinion of the body, but it is needed in this day and age. We need to hear that our rights will not be further infringed, because the people, frankly, the gun-owning, law-abiding citizens of this county will not tolerate further infringement of our liberties, especially where it comes to the Second Amendment. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, and fellow Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Louis Galloway, I'm a resident of Black Mountain. I represent a group called Swanano Valley Neighbors for Gun Safety. We have about 150 members of our group, and three others are here with us. You'll stand, and they yield their time.
So, our, just before we go, and we will take this time against you, as we just talked about the procedure, but to get more than three minutes.
I'm fine with three. Okay. I'm just gonna tell you, you don't have to call them in. First, we want to express our deep sympathy for the family of Mike Frye. He was our district commissioner, and we extend our prayers for love and care to his family, and are grateful for his service to our community and all the good that he has done. Well, gun violence in America has become a national public health crisis. Just this past weekend, a man with obvious mental difficulties killed a woman on a Greyhound bus and injured five others. We grieve for about 24 hours, and then we move on and pretend as if nothing has changed, nothing has happened. Mass shootings are at a stark high level in our country, and in the United States, on average, there are 100 deaths a day from gun violence. We lead the world in mass shootings. Suicide through gun violence has reached epidemic levels. There are more, it is estimated, 393 million guns in private hands in the United States out of an estimated 857 million guns worldwide, a disproportionate number of guns in our country. The sheer number and availability of assault weapons and guns with high-capacity magazines are a contributing factor to this horrific gun violence in our society. We support the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment provides for the right of citizens to bear arms. However, this right should not infringe upon the rights of other citizens to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And therefore, we call upon you, our state, our national leaders, to join us in building a healthier, more peaceful, and a more just society. We urge you, as leaders of our community, to use your influence to reduce gun violence. Specifically, our organization, Swanano Valley Neighbors for Gun Safety, call upon our leaders to do the following: to ban private ownership of assault weapons, high-capacity magazines, and weapons of war; to create a national system of no loopholes for universal background checks and a mandatory waiting period in order to purchase a gun; to support red flag laws that permit police or family members to petition the courts to remove guns from persons deemed to be a threat to themselves or to others; and to execute a national buyback plan for assault weapons, high-capacity magazines, and other weapons of war. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you're next. What, yes, sir, you can go next. Yes, sir. And you, with a second round, you can go next. We will get to, we'll get to everyone who wants to speak.
Explain the light system. When the little yellow light comes on, I got how many seconds?
Thirty seconds left. Thirty seconds when the orange light comes on, and when the red light goes off, you need to stop.
So I got 30 seconds after the yellow light.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Michael Morgan. I'm a native of Buncombe County. I was born and raised right here. When we went to high school, we put our shotguns in the back window of the truck in a gun rack. And we went into school and didn't lock the truck. And we came out after school and we went hunting till dark. I don't know what's happened to people in that time period, but it wasn't the guns that was the problem then. And I don't want to waste my time directing this gentleman, but it couldn't be 100 people that get killed, because only 14,000 got killed last year by guns, and maybe not that many, and maybe 50,000 by cars. I want to talk to you about the loaf of bread principle, please. If you got a loaf of bread and you make one sandwich, you got most of the loaf of bread left, and you don't mention, miss the two slices that you used. But if you just keep taking a slice off, and a slice off, and a slice off, pretty soon you have no loaf of bread left. Now you're talking about red flag laws, that's a new one. They're already talking about magazine capacity, and this kind of rifle is no good, and that kind of rifle is supposed to be banned. I think it was Justice Marshall, another lawyer, might know better than me, he said, "Any law you make that violates the Constitution is not a law." You can't make a law that violates the Constitution, so your red flag law is illegal to start The lady about needing a gun to protect her and her family. I believe if a woman gets a restraining order against a man, the judge should give her a pistol to go with that piece of paper. A piece of paper is worthless. Now, a pistol gives her something to protect.
Please, please refrain from any applause. We'll, we'll give you additional time.
Yeah.
Please refrain from applauding or booing any speakers. I would like for each speaker to be allowed to say what they want to say without crowd reaction. Please, thank you. Please continue.
I don't really need a whole lot more time. I believe I've done the fore and cross. As a convicted felon myself in the past, I can get it done any minute. From the time I walked down the court, and when the convicted felon, I had access to all kinds of weapons, friends' weapons, took a break in the house, it's still warm, and 150 people in Buncombe County who don't want guns. I dare you, put a registry out here of your list of names and addresses, and see how long you last before you get broken through. I'm sorry, but the facts are the reality. Good people obey the laws. Crooks don't care. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you. And then the gentleman in the red jacket, you can follow him.
After you, sir.
If you open, yeah, you're, you're next.
My name is Jason Brodsky. I'm a resident of Buncombe County, and I would like to see Buncombe County become a Second Amendment sanctuary. When we talk about further When we talk about further restrictions to our constitutional amendments, we do a disservice to our society since we take the focus from personal responsibility and initiative and one's own moral compass to an inanimate object, instead of looking at the societal influences that cause one to feel so disaffected or so removed from societal norms that they would do violence to others. Yet again, an individual with hate in his heart drove his car into a crowd of people. Many will say, "Well, you know, cars aren't designed to kill people." Well, to that, I say, "We have a real problem if a product that was not designed to kill people kills so many every day." A firearm is actually designed to do one thing, and that's to fire a projectile. As a 20-year vegetarian, yoga practitioner, and founder of the Asheville Yoga and Gun Club, I shoot targets and teach meditative marksmanship as a mindfulness practice. What one uses a firearm for depends on their intent, not the tool. Let us also not forget that firearms have also protected those who would otherwise be oppressed, and they also have prevented atrocities. In summary, they are truly inanimate objects, and the proper instruction and responsible use of firearms can greatly benefit a society. In fact, all Americans would do well to remember that our country was founded and born out of skilled marksmanship. Lastly, I thank you for your time, and I would like to refer everybody in this room who does not know about Project Appleseed to look into Project Appleseed. Thank you.
Then you can follow in the back, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. I don't think I've ever seen a room full of lawyers this sleepy. And I appreciate you listening. Y'all know, and I don't know if everybody here does, that in the Code of Ethelbert v. 597, one of the first English law codes, it was assumed that men would go about armed. There was no law restricting who could own a weapon. There were lots of laws that told you how you could carry the weapon. If you were drunk and walked with your spear pointed straight up and you guarded somebody, you went to jail, or worse. If you waved it about threateningly, you went to jail, unless we had our first brandishing laws. And not much has changed. As the common law grew, we had to recalibrate our individual statutes to figure out what people owed one another. Y'all remember failing question in high school civics class about Gilbert B. Ogden and debts contracted before the revolution? Y'all didn't, and that's why you've got to practice the law. But some things didn't change. The recognition that people would be armed. It was a natural right. What we did in this country was to connect that natural right to an organized militia. And yes, it ran out Lord Dunmore. I saw y'all looking around to see who was the executive branch, we mentioned that, and we don't want to run y'all out. But we do want you to listen. We want you to listen to a thousand years and more of common law. We don't want you to change that. Y'all can make resolutions about climate change all you want. They affect no one, and no one cares. But when you go messing with fundamental rights, you stir up the hornet's nest, and I don't want you to do that. So yeah, it'd be charming if you passed a sanctuary county law, but if you didn't, that's no skin off my back. Instead, I'm gonna ask you for something very small, if you know what it is. When I got my concealed carry permit last summer, I had to wait months. I had to wait months to get in at the courthouse, I had to take off work and miss time at school to go down and pick up the paperwork. I had to wait months for the background check to be taken. I had to wait months for that to get back, and I had to wait months to go sit down and fill out the paperwork that I was allowed to do. Everybody who waited on me was nice as pie. I said, "You know, y'all don't seem really overstaffed here on this detail." And they wouldn't comment. They said, "There are people you can talk to about that. Hire more staff in the CCW department and listen to us." That's all I asked. Thanks for listening.
After the gentleman's walking up, you're good. You're good, you're next.
Thanks. My name's Mike. I'm a relatively newcomer to western North Carolina, and I had absolutely no intention of coming up in front of you today until I walked in the building this afternoon. I'm here to exercise my First Amendment right to protect my Second Amendment right. And what I saw outside this building, walking in today, troubled me. You may have seen it, you may have not. I haven't walked through a sniper position in a long time, and they're out there tonight. I don't know if the county has a credible threat that you were made aware of, but when I look out in this audience tonight, I see law-abiding citizens, well, except for you, sir, you said you're a felon. But everybody else, and I'm not, is a law-abiding citizen, so I ask the county, what are you protecting yourself from? We're citizens here wanting to talk about one of our constitutional rights. That's it. I don't know how many cops are here tonight, but I appreciate cops, I love cops, I love seeing them out on the roads, I love being able to call 911 if I have to. I also love to be able to reach in and grab my Glock if I ever needed to. I've only pulled my gun once in my entire life, and it wasn't in this country. But I ask you to consider your oath, consider the Constitution of the United States. And I would like to see this county become a Second Amendment sanctuary county because I think that the national political unity here that the founding fathers put it in there because they knew that common sense wasn't common. But yet here we want to talk about common sense gun control law, which I would be all for if I knew we had common sense. The people are passionate about it. So I say, "Fall back on the Constitution. It's there for a reason." And I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Keller, and I live in Canler, North Carolina. I'm a Christ-falling, constitutional, conservative, libertarian, millennial who was born and raised in and around Buncombe County. I graduated from the University of North Carolina at Charler with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in 2015. I served in the North Carolina Army National Guard from 2011 until 2017. I'm here tonight to implore you to support making Buncombe County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Your oath of office, very similar to the one I and countless others have sworn, clearly states that you will swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States as well as the Constitution of North Carolina. Article 1, Section 30 of the North Carolina Constitution clearly reinforces support of the Second Amendment to the US Constitution by restating the Second Amendment verbatim. The Second Amendment was ratified on December 15, 1791. Following that, the militia acts of 1792 clearly state that a militia is made up of any free, able-bodied, white male citizen between the ages of 18 and 45. This was later expanded to all males regardless of race in 1862 and can easily be understood to include all people in this day and age. The late Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia said, "Nowhere else in the Constitution does a right attributed to the people refer to anything other than an individual right." He went on to say, "The very text of the Second Amendment implicitly recognizes the preexistence of the right and declares only that it shall not be infringed." I want to emphasize that a firearm with the correct hand saves lives. A recent example of this comes to us from the West Freeway Church of Christ just outside of Fort Worth, Texas. A gunman was stopped because Jack Wilson heroically stopped him with a pistol. Another example happened in the First Baptist Church in Sutherland Springs, Texas, when Stephen Williford, using his AR-15, heroically stopped a man from committing more murder than he already had. A recent example of people peacefully standing up for their right to self-defense is the gun rights rally in Virginia. Around 22,000 people stood on the steps of the Capitol in peaceful protest against the anti-Second Amendment agenda. Not one shot was fired, and according to the Washington Post, the police praised the peaceful crowd. I want Buncombe County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county because I want the citizens of this county to be able to defend themselves and their families how they see fit. This being an election year, I would like to quote the great statesman Frederick Douglass, "The liberties of the American people were dependent upon ballot box, the jury box, and the cartridge box, that without these, no class of people could live and flourish in this county." The United States Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution both recognize and protect our inalienable right to self-defense. These documents, however, do not grant rights to the people. Rights are given by God and supposed to be protected by government. Please uphold your oath to protect our rights. Those of us who are law-abiding gun owners do not wish violence upon anyone.
Yes, maybe you're next. And then you in the red shirt, you go after him, okay?
I just want to thank you all for letting us be here. My name is Vic Davidson. I was born and raised here in Asheville. I am 67. I lived in Monford all my life. I'm a grandmother, a wife, I have a grandson, I have a son that is in the 83rd, I mean, 82nd Airborne. He's still serving. My father was a police officer here for Buncombe County. When he came out of the Navy, he served well. He believed highly in protecting not just our family, but people around us. So I'm very much in support of the Second Amendment, and this Buncombe County that I love, that I still work in this city and support, is very dear to me. This is my home, and I pray that it will become a sanctuary county. I just wanted, more than anything, to say that, you know, to me, God has given us our freedoms, our freedom to love, to make free will, to have the choice to decide to do right or to do wrong. Most of us who are law-abiding citizens, who are concealed carry, open carry, who work hard, we pray, we do what we're supposed to do, and we depend on each of you to make decisions, the right decisions, the God decisions, for each of us in this county. And I'm just praying that each of you will pray about it. It is very important to us to uphold the Constitution. All the years that I was at William Randolph and David Miller and Lee Edwards, when we pledged allegiance to the flag, that was taken seriously for us as children, and it is still in my heart. So, thank you for your time, and please pray about your decisions. Thank you.
Yes, sir. After the, after this lady's walk.
Hello, my name is Amy Benedict, and I'm a resident of Asheville, Buncombe County. I'm here as a citizen and as the local leader for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. And it was mentioned earlier about gun sense, and I'm here supporting gun sense. I'm here to try to lower the volume of fear that's palpable in this room and bring it down. I'm here to correct misconceptions, and I'm here to try to bridge the gap. Moms is a nonpartisan organization advocating for stronger solutions for gun safety that will protect our neighbors and our families. We are not anti-gun. We are anti-gun violence. We do not go after gun owners. Many of us are gun owners. We are not going to take away your guns. We are pro-safety and responsible gun ownership. Someone is killed by a gun every seven hours in North Carolina. Hundreds of children are killed or injured by firearms in North Carolina every year. The North Carolina gun murder rate is 16% higher than the national average. So this Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, because that's what it is or would be, it's a symbolic vote. It's non-binding, however, it does undermine the fundamental right of state governments to enact laws aimed at curbing gun violence and protecting the health and well-being of our families, of you, of me, and of our children. So basically, this resolution of supporting the Second Amendment resolution does not make it law. However, the dangerous implication of declaring it, or for others hearing about it, of supporting the Second Amendment, is interpreted to mean that it's okay to disobey the law. It's okay. I'm safe from being charged for breaking the law, when we know, we all know, that's not true. Our sheriff is sworn to protect the laws of the state and the county as are all law-enforcement officers. This resolution potentially put them all in a dangerous position, and I don't think anyone here would be in favor of that. So what I'm here to hope to do is to lower the volume, seek information, see what these gun safety laws really are about, and find if they might be in agreement with them.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. After this, you may go.
Good evening, Chairman, other persons on the chair, county commissioners. Thank you for allowing me this time. Thank y'all for listening. I guess I need to speak in this so I can be heard, so I'll try not to turn around, but I am addressing you. I wish to thank each and every one of you that has spoken tonight. You articulated well. I can add nothing to it, other than I've taken at least five oaths that said I would uphold the Constitution and defend it. I would serve and protect certain populations, at one time the whole citizenry of the United States, at one time the citizens of Buncombe County. I have a total of 48 and a half years of law enforcement experience. I was a state firearms instructor, and that included legalizing, safety, and taking out on the range and making fire. And the young lady that addressed him said she was a single mother, and she would defend her family. I hope that lady had absolute ever right to do so. I have two credentials that allows me to carry concealed right now. I cannot miss chamber, and I appreciate that, that's okay. One would even allow me to carry the gun into an establishment primarily for the service I call beverage, not like the North Carolina law. I was here when the North Carolina carry concealed weapon was built, was a good build. Then it started getting eaten upon, just like our Constitution is today. It got watered down and patched, but I became an instructor for that also. I could write a certificate for a person that I felt was qualified to carry. And that wasn't just that they could get out there and punch holes in paper, that was did they have the mindset that they understood self-defense. They wouldn't get out and kill somebody, and then they would have to stand trial for criminal offense. And the undermining of our Constitution is pernicious. There are eight steps, and I won't name them all, to develop in a communist state. One of them is direct the economy. That's why Romans would kill somebody for minting coins that were not legitimate. And it still carries a pretty good penalty in this country, because if you can destroy the economy, you've got a bunch of poor people. Poor people are easily led, directed, herded. The next step was disarm them. Well, Hitler taught Europe in '36 and '38, and I think they learned the lesson, but now they're falling back. Thanks for the time. Thank you all.
All right, who's next?
Me?
Yes, sir. And then you can go.
Thank you. My name is Rich Johnston. I am a taxpayer, citizen, longtime resident here in Buncombe County, 100th of 100%. I came tonight merely I came tonight merely to listen. I have no prepared statement, but I did want to offer my observations on this, uh, this, this issue. First of all, I want to thank the Commission for protecting so diligently our constitutional right to speak in public. And I think, to me, that demonstrates a very solid emphasis on constitutional, appropriate constitutional support. Uh, in my mind, that extends to every element. I don't know that we can break out one piece of the Constitution that warrants attention beyond the other components of it. Uh, I heard nothing tonight to make me think that our constitutional rights, any of them, are in peril in Buncombe County. Uh, and for that reason, I think what we're debating is the question of whether or not to adopt a resolution recommended from the audience. Uh, we're not debating the Second Amendment as a whole, nor is this the venue we wish to do so. In my eyes, we do not need such a resolution, because I think our constitutional rights are being protected very well here in Buncombe County.
Who's next? Um, yes, sir. You can go next, right. And, uh, sir, you have, uh, you can follow this.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gabe Lab. I am a local of Asheville, raised here my whole life. Uh, I'm also a U.S. Army veteran, and I am very much asking that the board, uh, adopt the Second Amendment sanctuary policies that have been submitted. I just wanted to share some data, I think, that, uh, may help, um, you know, shed some light on things. So, as Mr. Morgan pointed out, there were about fourteen thousand gun deaths. This, this data comes from twenty sixteen. I'd be glad to source this out for you. Uh, out of those fourteen thousand classified as homicides, about eighty percent of them were gang-related. So, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, you know, as you know, Chicago has some of the most strictest gun laws, and they also have the highest crime as far as gun-related, or gang-related homicides. Also, about two thousand of those deaths were suicides. Japan has some of the highest gun laws, and they also have the highest rate of suicides out of any country. So, lastly, um, gun deaths, um, you know, leaves about two thousand or so that were classified as homicides, that were, um, um, you know, somebody shot from, uh, you know, another gun owner. And if you take that into consideration of the three hundred and twenty-five million people that live in our country, uh, your chances of being killed by a firearm are about point zero, 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 six percent. So I just wanted to share that. To put it another way, um, fifty thousand Americans die every year from the flu. Ten thousand people die from falling out of their beds. Uh, I think the closest number is about two thousand or so die from constipation. So that'd be the closest thing that you could relate to, uh, being actually killed by another firearm owner, as well as have. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, thanks for being here for a late, uh, to listen to our Second Amendment issues. I was born and raised here, and, uh, my name is Greg Farmer. I was born and raised here in Asheville, East High School, um, small businessman. And, um, I grew up like the other guys did. I grew up here. We had shotgun, rifles in our pickup trucks in the back window. Uh, never hurt a soul. I went squirrel hunting or bird hunting or whatever. But, um, you know, the way, the way the world's going, it just seems that, see if they get out of hand. And if we didn't get out of hand here in Buncombe County, we're gonna lose everything. And I think that, uh, we should become one of the Second Amendment sanctuaries, and also the red flag law. It just opens up a whole new, uh, idea for people to, well, I don't like this guy here, I'll get back at him, I'll call the cops. It'll be a danger to his self and society, and next thing you know, he's coming out with his guns, and he, he could get killed or kill somebody just for no reason. It could be nothing wrong with this, this danger of that liking. So I think it would be a bad thing to, to be a law here in our, in our county. And, uh, I'd like to spend, thank you very much.
Who'd like to go next? Um, yes, ma'am, you can go next. And, uh, the gentleman next to the aisle can follow him.
Thank you for considering this issue. Um, I've heard a lot of people quote the Constitution, but I've heard nobody say "well-regulated." And the Second Amendment says that a well-regulated militia. And I have, I've heard everyone quote "the right to bear arms," but not that it's well, it's well-regulated. And this woman who spoke from Mothers Against Madness was talking about gun safety and responsible ownership. And if laws are passed to that end, you have a constitutional duty to uphold those laws. Again, please consider all of the Second Amendment when you're considering this Second Amendment sanctuary issue. It's a well-regulated militia. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tom Deserou. I'm a resident of Candler. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church here in Asheville. I have a fifteen-year-old daughter, and she goes to Asheville High. She goes to Silsana. And every day, when I send her to school, I have to think about whether she's coming back. I have to think about how many days there have been lockdowns at that school because there had been arms fire in the surrounding neighborhood. Now, I know everybody in this room is a law-abiding resident, well, with the exception of the one gentleman that we've pointed out before. He evolved in through safe gun training. But there are others that are out there, and we all agree, that should not be carrying firearms. And what we need to do is work together to find a way of limiting that. Because I don't want to go through any more days where I have to worry about whether my daughter's coming home, or whether how many hours of her day are gonna be, uh, are gonna be interrupted by lockdowns, because it goes on on a fairly regular basis. I don't want to walk into my church and worry about where the exits are, and look out and see who is unusual in the congreg- in the congregation that I, you know, I may have to avoid, or I may have to be out of the line of fire for some, uh, from someone who might be, uh, who might be carrying. And that's all. I think we need to turn it down. I think we need to work together, and I think we need to create a safer community. And by taking away the ability of Buncombe County to do that, by having a second, a Second Amendment sanctuary, just is not gonna work. Thank you.
Hello, Chairman, Board. My name is Jackson Hensley. I actually am not a resident of this county, but after all, you Buncombe County people, Nancy County's got you. We're passing our own resolution on Monday, but I'm going to take on a little bit of darker tone to what everyone else has had this evening. Being someone whose family was directly affected by some very harsh, what you call gun violence, my uncle was a Marine Corps veteran of the Desert Storm conflict, as well as the war on terror. In two thousand thirteen, he was shot and killed by his ex-wife in his bedroom as he was asleep. To stem from that, I'm going to caveat and say that this resolution, although it holds no legal, you know, teeth, is something very necessary to make a statement, just like the rally in Virginia. Obviously, the rally made no sort of legal repercussion, but it sent a message that people were willing to come on, people were willing to be disobedient. And if violence were broken out, I'm sure those people would have been willing to fight. Now, one of those hard truths that I was talking about earlier is that violence is everywhere. If you're not capable of violence and meeting violence with violence, you are helpless. It's the hard truth. The next hard truth is that what happened in Virginia really sent a message to everybody. It broke the stereotypes of the white nationalists, or the terrorists, or, you know, the rich old white guy. Everyone thinks that. It broke that, because I saw, I didn't get to make it to Virginia sadly, but I met a lot of those gentlemen in Washington last November when I went for that rally. After speaking to them, there were people of all races, all genders, all religions, men, women, everybody, all gathered there together for the sake of a common goal. And some of the amazing attributes that I, that I noticed from them was an overwhelming sense of patriotism and responsibility for the freedoms of their, themselves and of their posterity. In closing, I'm going to say that, that everyone wants a peaceful resolve. Our, our country is at boiling point, uh, and everyone wants that peaceful resolve like I'm saying, and like I hope we'll see in North Carolina very soon. But, quoting founding father, I feel like most people here would agree that "life is not so dear or peace so sweet as to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery." Uh, so that pretty well sums it up. I, to quote the same founding father, "I know not what course everyone else may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death." Thank you.
And, uh, you can, you can follow.
No. 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 Well, how's it like?
Clear your hands.
Oh, clear your hands, everybody. I know it's late, I know you're tired. I know I am, I've been up since thirty. But it was important enough for me to come. I live in Madison, and I'm with a, a little southern mountain, there's nothing around but coyotes. I actually did that myself. There was no one else there, but I wasn't. And I'll tell you, I've never been so proud to be an American as I was to be in Virginia. I took time off work, I spent a lot of my personal money to get there because it was important to me. I saw more AR-15s there, strapped across my fellow patriots' chests than I've seen at gun shows. And not one, not one round fired, not, the police were just as polite as they could be, asking directions. It was crowded, it was cold, and yet, and I saw veterans that could barely walk. But it was important enough for them to be there, they were there. I saw a little old woman, little walker, that again could barely walk, and they parted like the Red Sea for her, and let her walk through, and she was there, because it was important. And that's really all I have to say. Don't take away, don't try, because I would not comply. But do not try to take away our Second Amendment rights and our rights to protect ourselves. I mean, I've got nobody else. I'm it, me and my gun, up there on Saddle Mountain. And, uh, and one more note. About two months ago, one of my neighbors came banging on my door, about two o'clock in the morning, announced himself, because he didn't want to get shot, because he knows me. And he said, uh, "There's a fugitive right here. I got a reverse nine-one-one." He knew I didn't have a landline. He said, "Right here, somewhere, have you got your gun?" I said, "You know I do." He said, "Okay." So I called my son, who lives at the bottom of my car, and let him know, "Lock your doors, because we don't out there." And he went and got the keys out of his car, locked his doors. Thirty minutes later, he called me, he said, "The guy just tried to seal my car." They were armed, I was armed, we were safe. Don't take that away from us, don't try, don't take that away from us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Orem, and I know many of you from living and working in this county for twenty-seven years. I wanted to say that this evening I, I felt intimidated and I'm a little scared. I felt intimidated by so many people advocating for no rules on gun ownership in Buncombe County. I also felt scared that one day that may be the case. I feel confused about how I can see this issue so differently from the many fine citizens who have spoken here today. I, I feel safe here, and I agree with the previous speaker that I see no evidence that our Second Amendment is in peril. I encourage those of us who have spoken here today to try to listen to each other and to find a way to understand how we each can feel scared and intimidated by what each of us is saying on both sides of the issue. There must be a middle ground on this issue. And we have to depend on your guidance as elected officials to find it, so that each of us can live here, so together with everyone else, and feel safe together. I hope that you find that middle ground.
All right. Yes, Ali, yes. And, uh, Don, you can follow this.
Hi. I've only lived in North Carolina totals about thirty years. The first members of my family that have lived here were in the seventeen nineties after fighting in the American Revolution, so I have some credibility. Two members of my family have been killed by guns. The first was my brother-in-law in the sixties. Somebody was upset with him and shot and killed him. The second one was my sister about five years ago, who shot and killed someone who was threatening her daughter and grandchildren. So I do know about that. My first memory of shooting on a rifle was probably around ten years old, it may have happened sooner. At any rate, I think you can defend yourself. I think, though, the problem is that without regulation, too many people that aren't steady enough have weapons, and weapons that can kill others. And it's a very quick response when you pull a trigger. The trouble is, there's frequently not time to sort things out before you do that, and it's irrevocable when you do. So if you don't have that kind of control over yourself before you know what you're doing, you should not have that weapon. And I'm sorry, but there should be some regulation to determine who has that kind of control. You wouldn't give a three-year-old a semi-automatic pistol for them to play with, because they can defend themselves when the other three-year-old throws something at them. That's ridiculous. So at the same time, somebody that's maybe forty years old, that cannot control themselves, but instead has immediate responses to things they find, you know, that they disagree with, should not have that ability to have that immediate, definite, possibly lethal response to other people. Thank you.
Right. Um, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, you can go and follow the gentleman's next.
I'll be real quick. Honestly, Brownie, I didn't come up here to speak, and I wasn't gonna speak to them just because everybody else did. Because I came up here saying the best thing you can do is stand by the Constitution. But based upon the interpretation I've seen of the concentrate, the interpretation of the Constitution tonight, I can also see the same interpretation of blue law, which will take it from somebody who shouldn't have to take it away from, ain't you? So you could interpret something any way you want to. That's what happens. You look for the, what you want in that law. And it's very, very simple, folks. It's very, very simple. If you are going to do something bad, and you want to have mass violence, where are you going to go? you going to go? To a school where no one has a gun, not a teacher that's been trained on the firearm, not a cop standing at the door, and God love the police, there's enough here tonight, their budget's going to go up because you've got so many here. But, you know, you're not going to go into the church that has a sign on the front door that says "Carry and Conceal Welcome," are you, to do your dirty work? You'll go into the one where it says "No Guns Allowed," which is exactly like this county office building. So maybe that's the reason we have the computer out there to greet people when they come in off the third elevator rather than somebody sitting there. Bottom line is, folks, I think you're going to have to pass this amendment and say, "We believe in each individual's right to defend himself," and you should consider inserting in there that we will not honor any state law that says we have to do this or that or the other for red flag law, because we have a sheriff that's not honoring what the federal government would like to have done in releasing criminals. So if you guys, the ones that pay the bills for the county and the sheriff and everybody else, don't do your job, we're all in danger.
Yes, sir. And who else wants to speak?
Hello, my name's Bill Tomberlin. I've lived in Buncon County continuously since 1983. I've worked in the same industrial plant since 1987. I know a lot of people on both sides of this issue. I'm here to ask that you do make Buncon County the Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And because, number one, I've heard several things, people on both sides today, because of the potential for abuse with primarily the red flag law. And I know there's quite a division in Buncon County and this area. I heard comments about the police presence. I personally was very thankful to see the police presence outside. I was here escorting, escorted my barely 18-year-old niece to the Trump rally, and I saw a lot of what I felt like lack of police presence as we exited that rally several years ago. But I would really like to admonish you to really consider making this Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Maria Fletcher, I'm not sure how many of you know that name. If you do, you might know that she's 1962 Miss America. She was also from Asheville, North Carolina. If you look up her name in Wikipedia, I believe you'll find someone that's not terribly scared of the horribly scary AR-15. In fact, she was in Time Magazine showing her taking target practice and being trained in it when it first came out on the market. I understand very much, very much the, how deeply this whole subject is to everyone. And I hope that you make good choices. Thank you very much.
Jerry Rice? Yeah, let's speak. I guess you can follow this. I'm sorry. Go connect to me there. I'm sorry, I know I have to tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Well, you sure got an education tonight, you young whippersnapper needs it. You know, my dad served in World War I, died at 100 years old, never harmed nobody. Had a high brother get killed in World War II at 19 years old, he served his country. Had another brother in Vietnam, served his country, paying for it today. Had a son-in-law to go with Desert Storm. There's 19 of us. We had guns around the house, we had to make a living, we had to eat meat, we didn't have it to buy, we had to go get it. So, telling you a little story here, is out of 19 children, no one that I know of ever had a broken bone, never been shot, never been chopped up and cut up. We had a good, well-rounded life. Responsibility is what we need. But God first. We need God in this picture. We need to know what that means. It's okay to live right, but we've got to protect ourselves as well. He didn't expect us to be stupid. Now, saying all this about my family and going to be in these wars and all this, we live in one of the biggest areas of veterans. I can't imagine what a veteran would think about commissioners if it wouldn't pass this tonight and say that this is a sanctuary city or county. The veterans would be very dishonored with a bunch like that. We don't need a Bernie Sanders, we need somebody like Trump that tells it like he did. I'm not saying that Bernie is a crazy fellow, but I don't think he needs to hold the reins You know, I'm gray-headed too, but that don't mean I'm off either. Politics has served us too long now. We need some good common sense. The common sense is, if we let people know where we stand, they don't have to worry about it when they come to our door in the community, they know we're going to protect ourselves. I don't have to go get a concealed permit, I don't need one. I'll take my guns with me wherever I need to go. So, you know, let's use common sense. Let's think about the Constitution, and let's talk about what the people need to protect themselves. If they can serve our country in grace and honor and die for it, why can't we do that at home? If we don't protect their land, you know, if we go out and protect everybody else, we need to protect ourselves at home.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Then you'll be following this.
I just want to say thank you all for letting me speak. My name is Jeremiah, I've been here since June, love the area, it's beautiful, but to kind of address a couple of things that I see. I think what y'all need to be asking is why, on a lot of these things, as far as why, is there certain terminology being used? Weapons of war, assault rifles, assault rifle is fully automatic. Most people don't have access to a $10,000 gun. And Moms Demand Action, if we want to talk about that, they're not a grassroots movement, they're being funded by Michael Bloomberg, who just said he wants to take away all guns that don't have, or that have a capacity of three or more rounds. That's insane. I can only name a handful of those guns. It's ridiculous. I'm about to be a father, my wife is 34, or she's 34 weeks pregnant, called me in the middle of the night, said, "While I was in Georgia handling some business, I heard a bump in the night. I said, 'Get my gun, if there's someone there, go down and don't stop pulling the trigger.'" Because police times, I think in 2010, response times were 4.9 minutes, and Asheville, they're now up to, I think, 7.9 minutes. And Asheville's just growing, and it's going to get worse. Law enforcement, they're just understaffed and overwhelmed, you know that. I work in the ER up here, I see the things as far as the drug use, and with that comes violence, it comes crimes. And what do we do with these people that come in and produce? Fix them, put them back out on the street. It happens every single day. This is ridiculous. I do not feel safe leaving my wife at home. And people want to talk about these laws, and why are we having this conversation? It's because we're watching Virginia. You know, Michael Bloomberg bought that stake, and he's coming in, he already said he's targeting North Carolina next. We know it's coming, and that's why we're having the conversation. This group, the Second Amendment group, is one of the quietest groups out there, we're one of the strongest. And that's why we're asking you all to stand up and speak for us and protect us. And just like we'll stand up for the Moms Demand Action, we'll protect their First Amendment, we'll be the first in line to protect that poor group. And we're just asking for the same thing in return. So thank you, guys.
Gentlemen, from the back, you can follow this.
Howdy, my name is William Wallace Lyons. I was born in Texas, but I have lived in North Carolina these 27 years, here in Buncon County especially. I'm a volunteer firefighter, I've been one for about seven years. I'm also an Eagle Scout, and since I was little, I was raised on how to use firearms. That's probably one of the first things I've ever memorized when I was little, is how to use firearms and the safety rules that go with it. I was also homeschooled, and there are a lot of people who are afraid of sending their kids to school these days because they're afraid of mass shooting. Well, I highly suggest homeschooling. But for those who don't have that option, one thing I would suggest is more training on how to properly use firearms. That is a big help. I know my Boy Scout troop, we went down to Florida, and every one of my guys in my troop, I was their leader, we went to shotgun range down there, and we competed against all the Floridians. My unit, Boy Scouts, we were all well-trained, and we all outshot every one of them, brought back a prize for it as well. There's, my Second Amendment rights is very dear to me. I don't own any modern rifles. I collect antiques. Whenever I see an old rifle, I always prefer to buy that than an AR-15, that's a passion I have. Although I love old rifles, I know that with what's out there, it's not really what is needed to defend myself. I own a Mauser, and that holds five rounds. I can tell you from several reenactments I've been to, five rounds won't get you very far, and you probably won't hit the target with four of those rounds. Hopefully, the last would hit that target. With three rounds, I can only imagine. The French during World War I were armed with rifles that had three rounds, and the Germans slaughtered them. I mean, big time. Well, they also wore red pants as well, part of their early uniform. I mean, it has always been common sense to me, and everyone I grew up around was always knowing how to use a firearm. And I hope that y'all will plan for the future, so they will too.
All right. Who else? Yes, sir, in the back, and who else? All right, this one? Okay. Is there anyone else?
I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us to speak. My name is Darrell Parsons, I'm a lifelong resident of Buncon County. I went to A.C. Reynolds High School and immediately followed high school while I joined the Army. When I joined the Army, I took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I think the framers really had something in particular in mind when they added "and domestic." They weren't worried about us being attacked by deers and rabbits and squirrels, they were worried about a government becoming tyrannical and having to be fought against. I take the Second Amendment very seriously. If the Second Amendment goes, any of the other ones could go right after it, because you have no way to defend yourself. I've had weapons all my life, I got my first rifle when I was 10, I've had them ever since, and not one of them has ever killed anybody. Guns are not the problem, people are the problem. The ones who attacked us on 9/11 used airplanes, the Oklahoma bomber used fertilizer. If you want to kill somebody and you don't have guns, and you're not worried about abandoning laws, you'll find a way to do it. You can use a car or an airplane, as already mentioned. So I just hope that you all will honor the Constitution, honor the oaths that you've taken to defend the Constitution, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, from the back, then you may, yeah, who raised their hand previously? You may, yes, you may go. And in the front, which is...
Hello, and thank you for giving us a chance to speak on this tonight. My name is Natalie Henry Howe, and I'm a resident of West North Carolina, and I work here in Buncon County. And I want to talk tonight about my personal story and the .0006 chance of being a victim of gun violence found my son. He was Riley Howell, UNC Charlotte, the shooting that happened there, he was in that classroom when the shooter walked in and had a backpack with extended magazines and his 9mm, and started shooting at the students closest to the door. And my son had been taught in school to run, hide, or fight, as had the other students in that classroom. And it was right there, in that moment, and I really hope your children never, ever put in that position, but he chose to fight that day. And so when he went forward to try to stop this from happening, he was shot multiple times and died on the scene quickly, from what I hear, and I hope painlessly, but I know in my heart it wasn't that way. So I just want to say that when we're talking about gun safety measures, they matter to these individual people that this has happened to, and that could be anybody here. I never, ever, ever expected this to touch my family. I, like you, heard about it, you know, statistics, and I'm horrified by it, but to be living it is something I can't even, I can't even explain to you. So I guess my why is why we aren't all coming together to try to figure out what we can do to prevent this from happening. So any gun safety measure, and I have met so many parents in outpouring of love across the world, and I do mean the world, has come to my family, and we are so appreciative. And again, this isn't about, you know, responsible gun owners doing the right thing, who are mentally sound and are good citizens, that's not who we're talking about. We're talking about something that we could do to prevent this from happening to another family. In my son's case, the more expansive background checks would have made a difference. Not having an extended magazine, that shooter would have made a difference. Extended magazines, I understand, help people protect their homes, but they also cause more killing. In a mass shooting, that pause from the extended magazine being spit out gives people there a safe time to do something, to get away, to attack, to do something. And anyway, I just wanted to speak about that. And I also want to say that at the heart of this matter, I feel like we're all together, like what can we do to protect and keep people safe? And, you know, your answer might be a gun, and my answer might be a preventative health, I mean, a preventative safety measure, and they can work in conjunction, and I just really hope this conversation goes in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I gave up about 40 seconds earlier. No, sit down. Yes, sir. You've already spoken.
Can you speak on a different topic that you broke earlier? Not going to at all.
No.
I should have, I had an awful reaction.
No. Or Elizabeth, you haven't spoken yet, you've already spoken, time's up.
Good evening, commissioners, I just want to speak, there's been a lot of good arguments tonight. Some has been touched on, but I'd like to bring it back to the fact that this is a non-binding resolution. My name's Dennis Gibson, I support the non-binding resolution in Buncon County to make it a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And I'll point out, there's been a lot of argument and discussion about the Second Amendment, and sort of, and when it was touched on the fact that this is just a resolution, why Buncon County needs to do it. And I'll address some of those points. Why Buncon County needs to do it is because, one point is currently House Bill 86 in the General Assembly, is essentially the gun control measure that's currently in front of the Judiciary Committee in Raleigh. It would classify most of the firearms that I think these people own in this room as being assault weapons and would make them illegal. For me personally, it would make the rifle that my father got... For me personally, it would make the rifle that my father got me thirty years ago illegal. We do not have the time, the energy, or the resources to lobby Raleigh to prevent those measures from happening. What we do have is this, to address our commissioners, who are the closest representative body that most of us will ever get to. And to point out, I've not been keeping an exact count, but the ratio of pro versus anti is something that any politician should consider. So four hundred some odd jurisdictions in the United States have passed Second Amendment sanctuary resolutions. They're just as non-binding as this one would be, but they've done it. The vast majority of Virginia, with the exception of maybe two counties, has decided to make itself Second Amendment sanctuary counties. And to reiterate, the news hit just a few days ago that there is a multimillion-dollar operation to push what is currently proposed in Virginia into North Carolina with the money to back it up in an attempt to regulate guns. We're asking you, as residents of Buncombe County, as our, in essence, first line of defense, to pass this non-binding or adopt this non-binding resolution so you can demonstrate to us that you are representing us and you are going to consider what we want, when we're not able to do that in Raleigh or DC. Thank you.
Commissioner and chairman, thank you for having me up here. My name's A.J. Fox. Was born and raised here in Buncombe County. I've been in law enforcement for thirty-eight years. Highway Patrol, I retired from the Highway Patrol. Was nineteen years with the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, Lake River Police Department, and now I'm with Haywood County Sheriff's Department. Thank y'all for listening to us tonight, mainly, and I'm just here to support our Second Amendment and also disapprove of the red flag law, red flag laws. And I appreciate if y'all will do that, and I run it for sheriff in 2022. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir, and you may also. Are you here first, or do other gentlemen have?
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, my name is Wiley Westall, local attorney in town. I just want to say thank y'all for your time. Thank you for your patience this evening. It was outstanding, and you should be commended for that. I wrote y'all a couple of weeks ago about a fiscal legal case I took where a lady was almost convicted from her home because of the tax foreclosure. What I did not put in that email that I, they have been inadvertently relevant to know, and lied to Commissioner Roger's passing, is that Mike actually paid off that tax bill himself with his own money and some friends' money that he raised. And he had started a TED project, and he was in touch with the, a little bit about it, about trying to find alternative ways to save people's housing and taking care of people who had tax bills and, you know, hundreds of dollars. And in that one situation, the lady's running across some hard times. She's in a hospital, and she missed notices, and the mechanism for the county to collect these taxes, you know, kind of to go over, just got stuck in a machine. I looked at the report tonight and saw, you know, that there's forty million that remains untold. Obviously, we need to have to fund all the important programs we have and all your, all sorts of security. My encouragement, just in honor of Mike and his thought would be that there are other mechanisms available, such as liens, and maybe there's some way to develop just some kind of procedure to give somebody like that who doesn't have an outstanding tax bill account. Because when that started, her bill, I think, was about four or five hundred dollars. You know, by the time the whole process concluded, it was about three thousand. So there, you know, and I don't have the best idea. I know the school government has some thoughts and some wonderful opportunities, but just in honor of, when Mike said, you know, at the time here tonight, that I think that I encourage y'all, see there's a way to protect some of those lower-income people, people who are powered to take their homes. That's all I have. Thank y'all very much for your time, and best of luck with your patience as it goes on.
Thanks, Piper. Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to say I thank everybody that's here tonight. I retired from Buncombe County. I was a park ranger at Lake Julian for thirty years. Some of the worst people in the world that you want to meet was there. We run into every kind of gangster. We even had one guy that was a wanted murderer out there caught one day. So I just want you to think about something, though. Now, if you're at home, or your wife's, or your husband or whatever's at home, and four guys breaks in, and they've got, you know, knives, guns, sticks, or whatever, you've got a little old pistol that's got six shot in it, okay? How are you going to get, how are you going to defend yourself against these people with six, you know, with, with guns, knives, and everything with six bullets? Most people in time of being in an emergency is not going to be able to shoot straight to begin with because the adrenaline is just going to be crazy. So how are you going to be able to hold a gun and shoot all those people with just four or five bullets? You're not. So I look at it, and, you know, we need to make this a sanctuary county for Buncombe County so the citizens can protect themselves against the people that I've had to deal with over the years. I thank God that I'm no longer out there. It was a great place to work, but some of the people we dealt with was just hardened criminals. And just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right, this gentleman will be our last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Roger Edwards. I'm a resident of Buncombe County. I've been sitting, listening to all the comments tonight, and I just ask that you support the Second Amendment sanctuary. I realize it's, it's not binding, it carries no weight, but I think it sends a strong message to Raleigh and to Washington. And we've all had the opportunity to exercise our First Amendment rights here tonight, and I'm afraid if our Second Amendment rights are infringed upon, we will not be able to exercise our First Amendment rights more after that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came this evening to share your perspective on this issue and other, other issues. During the public comment, the county commission typically does not respond. This is our chance to listen to citizens, so don't take the fact that commissioners haven't responded and aren't going to respond right now as an indication that we're not interested in what you're saying. But this is, we talk a lot during the meetings, and this is the part of the meeting, our, our job is to, is to.
Thank you for that, there is.
All right. All right, we've got just a couple of announcements. On February 18th at 3:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold a pre-meeting here at 200 College Street, Room 326 in Asheville. And then on February 18th at 5:00 p.m., the county commissioners will hold the next regularly scheduled meeting here at 200 College Street, Room 326. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, or adjourned.